The Finance and Administration Committee, would the roll call, roll please be taken?
Alderman Coles. Alderman Lazara.
I am here, here.
Alderman Shaki.
I think so.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods. Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I declare a quorum present. Approval of minutes of December 22nd, 2011. Do I have a motion?
Let me do my motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next item is the report and recommendation on the FY 2013 CIP. And I hope we all have a copy of it in front of us. I just have to take the clip off of my... Do we turn this to Mr. Wilson, or you want to take the lead on this, sir?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If for some reason you do not have a copy, I do have some extras here in case you need one. Is everybody okay? Okay. Give us just a second here to get the slides up on the screen there. There we go. Have Mr. Fashoda navigate the slides for us. This is the fourth year that the city's prepared a CIP in this fashion. The first, call it seven pages are just the letter transmittal and a draft copy of the Probably the most important page of the document is on page nine. Sometimes you've got to break form a little bit. This page is the pro forma statement of cash flows for both the General Capital Projects Fund, which is funded via the non-home rule sales tax, and the utility tax primarily, with a $200,000 transfer from the Roden Bridge Fund, and the pro forma cash flow statements for the Water and Sewer Capital Projects Fund, which is funded through the Water and Sewer Fund via the water and sewer rates that the city charges. You'll notice for the General Capital Projects Fund that in each of the five years of the CIP, it does have a positive ending cash balance. Fiscal 13 is supposed to begin with just around 1.9 million, which means that fiscal 12 is estimated to end at the 1.892, and then each of the years going out 850,000, 1.9 million, 1,000,200, and 4.5. We did have a little bit of a hiccup in 14 and 15 when we went through and did the cash flows initially. What we wound up having to do was break Royal Oaks up from one massive project, over $4 million project in one year, to breaking it up into two projects into 14 and 15. We also then, to fix the cash flow in 15, had to move the Mill Road resurfacing to 16 to line up with the water replacement of Mill Road. And moving those projects out, half of Royal Oaks out a year and Mill out a year, allowed us to maintain those positive cash flows in that year, in those years, should something else come up or the council want to move a project forward or backwards a little bit. That gave us a lot more flexibility than trying to do the one year of Royal Oaks in 14. If we go down a little bit to the water side, you'll see that 13 is upside down by approximately $1.8 million. A little over 500 of that is due to the treatment plant. After you add in the construction cost, the construction management agreement you approved last week, and the contingency, came up to about 10.515 million, and the bonds are going to be just under 10, so it was about a $500,000 and change variance there that we had to fund. The other 1.3 million was effectively estimated in last year's CIP and was a planned drawdown over the next couple of years that the council had decided on last year and kind of tentatively agreed to as a product of the water rate study that Baxton and Woodman had done as well. So, while it does look a little ugly that first year, it's not something that we hadn't planned for in previous years. The out-years are negative just as a function of that first year. Once we fixed the transfer in from the Water and Sewer Fund for 13, those out-years will all become positive. So, there's no issue past 13, just 13 is the last year of the significant drawdown of the Water and Sewer Fund cash reserves. So unless there's any questions on those, we'll move on to the Transportation section.
Any questions? No comments? Nope.
And this is a summary page. You can see in each year here what the projects are. Typically, we've discussed just the upcoming years, but some of these projects, like I said, like Royal Oaks, then once, especially once we get into the Water Fund, some of these projects, you know, staff wants to have a little bit of a discussion on just so we get direction going forward, so we know whether to continue to plan for these projects or if they're just going to die a slow death. So for next year, we have the last little bit of the alley replacement. This came up as a function of this year's alley replacement. The question had come up with the alley that I think was kind of two dead-end alleys, and the monies in here is to design and construct those two dead-end alleys to become a through alley. So I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with what those are. If not, I can pass it to Mr. Kramer to expound upon that a little bit more. Because this wasn't originally planned, I don't think this was originally on the schedule, but it came up, so we put it in there.
We did notice that during the construction, this past year's alley project, we did receive some complaints from local residents asking why we weren't completing the alley behind Tom Zax's, and I believe it's Belafina on the other side, Maple and Catalpa. So we put together a program to connect those two right now. As you recall, Tom Zax's parking lot basically kind of is the alley for all intensive purposes, so it becomes not really a thoroughfare, but more of a parking lot. And by adding that thoroughfare through the back alley, it allows residents to, from Maple and Catalpa, to basically drive back through that alley, allowing less traffic on Irving Park Road, less dangerous of a turn to use that, and the commerce between those
Mr. Mayor.
Actually, I don't have a question on the alley. I just want to go back one real quick on the Water and Sewer. That's all right. I want to go back. When you're showing the ending cash balance, a million eight negative, that's taking in consideration the $5 million that we should have left over after this year's project,
That is just the cash balance for the Capital Projects Fund within the Water Fund. The Water Fund, the Water and Sewer Fund, the operating fund, still is around 7 million. So after...
But I thought we were drawing that down. It was around over eight, and we were using about 3 million. It's going to still be 5 million. So we do have $5 million, at least $5 million in the Water and Sewer Fund.
Correct. Yeah, that hasn't been drawn down all the way. This would be the final drawdown of that, to get it down to that number.
Sorry, I was talking to Alderman Wesley when you were, and I should have been paying attention.
That's okay.
Alderman Wesley.
I have one question on the alleys. Did the alley project that we just completed right now, that was under what we budgeted from last year, or were we over? John, I only put you on the spot.
We were under budget.
So whatever excess we have from being under budget for that phase will go into finishing those two alleys, or some of that money, am I correct? Is that what we're doing here?
Well, the money would go back into the kitty for the General Capital Projects Fund, and then we would just budget for it. So, I mean, if you want to think of it that way, sure, but it all goes back into the same pot of money, and then we reallocate it for the rest of that project.
Well, I just think what the problem is, if it came down lower than what we bargained for, instead of going back to the general fund, what we're talking about is that maybe we earmark it for that alley to finish those two alleys, and then we don't have to take this... You know, I understand it goes in one pot, but the point is, I think it needs to go back.
Certainly, yeah, we can accomplish that. Yeah, we can do that.
Any other questions? Yes, Alderman Coles.
John, I've got a question for John. Did you finish all the alleys that were promised to be done, or no? Too late?
No, we didn't. Alley two behind, off of Division Street connecting Division and Wooddale Road, that L alley behind Marino's, that was not completed. We could have probably completed it with the nice weather that we had this past winter, but it did not get done. We're waiting on a utility conflict with AT&amp;T. They're going to move some duct out of the way on Wooddale Road. Once that's complete, we're going to come in in late March, early April, should be knocked out within a month and a half.
What about the alley by Edgewood? North of Irving Park? The little one that's behind the Carrefracta? There's an alley there? Has that one been done?
The dentist office off of Edgewood, that side's been done, and the other side has been done between that, and I always forget the name of the street on that side, but towards the Marathon Gas Station, that's been completed. As far as I'm concerned, from property line of the City of Wooddale, going in the western direction's been completed on the north side.
I'm talking about the south side. I'm talking about the alley on the south side where the American Legion has their posts. Has that alley been done?
Correct. That alley's been done.
Has it been done? Both sides?
Currently, it goes from, I don't have my alley map in front of me, but we did complete the western side of Edgewood. The eastern side, I think that dead ends there, doesn't it? So that one is more or less a functioning driveway that we did not complete.
All right, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? You may resume. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, John. Moving on to the Woodland Court Detention Basin. This one has kind of been hanging out in the funded section for the last couple of years, but never done. And based upon the passing of the citywide storm, the master plan a couple of weeks ago, we know we did present this as funded, but we felt it would be prudent to move it to unfunded along with the other flooding projects until the study was completed and they can be ranked appropriately. So unless there's objection, otherwise, we're going to move this from the funded to the unfunded section until that master plan is done, and then address all of them globally instead of still trying to catch this one in a one-off sort of a situation.
Mr. Alderman. Alderman Coles.
That means that, excuse me, that means that one won't be completed, won't be checked over, won't have any water in it for the last five years like it's been. And you're talking about flooding on Ward One, and we have two areas of retention ponds that we're not using, all because of an engineering change that was done when they put in Ethan Woods' project. I told Mr. Graff what he had to do, and he said it wouldn't cost him hardly any money. And still now, we're putting it on a back burner, and we are never going to get it done. They'll never get done.
Mr. Wilson.
Well, that's kind of why we're talking about it, to get consensus if you want us to do this one, you know, ahead of the master study, or if you want us to wait, so.
I thought you had a study on it.
Alderman Wesley.
Woodland Court Detention Basin. I thought our engineer has been working it in the past, so, I mean, I just don't understand. If we already started a process of working, coming up with a solution over there, again, why would we put it off if we already spent money, what our engineer did to try and solve it then? I mean, I just don't understand. So, I know L ain't here because of weather and that, but, I mean, unless John can answer that.
Mr. Kramer.
Thank you. I did ask Baxton and Woodman to take a look at the Woodland Court Detention Basin under the General Engineering Services Agreement. They have shot some grade out there. They're in the midst of working up some solutions currently. Those solutions could be rather involved. That's why we're kind of taking the $20,000, and for right now, not saying that it's going to be funded. There may be some in-house solutions that we can do. There can be some smaller correction measures, or they could possibly, and I don't even know, we could be able to eliminate a portion or one of those ponds. So that's what we're looking at right now. We don't have all the information. This project kind of got danced around and moved from year to year, but we are looking at it. We're going to have some further information, and we'll bring it back to you shortly, in the next coming weeks.
Mr. Wesley.
Then, again, since we already got this far into it and they're working on it, I would strongly suggest that that remains in that spot, because like he said there, we might be able to do it, easy solution. So I'd rather leave that $20,000 there and not dump it totally out, because we already working on it. So, I agree with Joe. If we got to go, there's no reason why, if it comes back really high, then we can bump it out and wait till we get everything in place. But we already started work on this. I just don't like to go backwards with the project we started. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not a problem. That's why we, as I said, wanted to... No, that's fine. Unless there's objection, we'll leave it in and see how the report comes back.
None. Leave it there for now.
Sure.
We'll see how much it costs.
Sure. Okay. The next slide is the master plan. And the master plan was approved a couple of weeks ago. We have the $50,000 in this year, and then a significant bulk of it being done after May 1st for the $100,000. We've had some discussions since we put this together of what that $50,000 was supposed to be. One of the initial thoughts was that it was going to be for additional studies or follow-up studies, but then the conversation turned to, we should probably, we should put a pot of money in there for construction and, you know, fixing of some of these areas above and beyond what's in the unfunded section. So, again, just trying to get the flavor of the council to see if you want to leave that money in there for studies in, you know, later years. People come in, hey, my area floods now, stuff like that. Or if you want this to be more of a holding area, kind of a pot of money earmarked for solutions based upon what the master study shows.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. $200,000 over the next few years. Couple of weeks ago, we passed a citywide drainage study, $140,000. Now, this one's a citywide stormwater master plan, $200,000. I don't know, maybe I'm confused. Sounds like we got two studies doing the same thing.
It's the same one.
I need a little explanation.
Yes, sir.
It's the same, it's the same study. And the 140...
So I was wanting 140, and now one's 200.
Sure. The 140 was the 50 from fiscal 12. It's probably going to wind up being around 40, and then the 100 for fiscal 13, that's the 140 that was approved. But then, like I said, we put those extra 250,000s in there for, if after we do the master study, kind of like what you were talking about with the flood buyout last week, if other areas of town come forward and say, hey, we hear you're doing the study, you haven't studied my area, come study me, things like that, that's why that was put there.
The study, can I follow? Studies are citywide. Study already. How many times are we going to study where it's flooding? I think we've seen enough people come in to tell us where it's flooding.
Alderman Wesley.
And I know where we're going with that. I understand the citywide master plan, so we discussed last time, if we do this study that, we need to earmark some money to correct some flooding issues. So I would recommend that that money for the city's stormwater studies is earmarked to correct some of these problems, start a separate line item in the budget to isolate these areas that we may be able to fix, and we need to start funding that project down the line. So I would not recommend taking $50,000 for any more studies and earmark it, because we're doing it citywide regardless. We're going to know where it's at, take that $50,000 and put it in the fund. When the study comes back, we might, $100,000, we might be able to correct one area or whatever areas might be flooding issue. So I would suggest that we take the $100,000 and move it into a fund, a separate fund, to correct the problems that we're doing in the citywide study. So that will be my, I mean, that's what I would like to see done.
I don't know. You're talking about doing the engineering and some of the work with the same budget here.
No, I believe I'm staying, we already approved a citywide study of flooding issues, and we now asking for another $100,000 to do more studies with the drainage issues. So it's additional $50,000, it's a different $100,000 over the citywide drainage study. That's what I'm getting from this layout, and that's the way I'm getting it from our finance. So I'm saying, instead of taking $100,000 like we would do next year for another study, continue to do another study, take that $100,000 and put it away, because we already approved a $145,000 citywide drainage study a couple of weeks ago. So this was another study to look at more flooded areas, but we already doing it citywide, so the $100,000 shouldn't be there. Put it in the area that needs to be repaired if we gets down to it. I guess they got the answer.
Yes, sir.
I think what Alderman Wesley is suggesting, which I agree with, is to, the construction line in fiscal year 2014, move monies there, take monies away from master plan development in 14 and 15. That's what he's recommending.
Do what with it?
Put it into construction. So a study's only good if you're eventually going to follow through with some construction. So we've done the study in fiscal year 12 and in fiscal year 13, which will complete closure with the study, and then in 14 and 15, that's where you can start doing your construction.
It's not going to be a complete closure.
Well, closure to the study, and then starting construction on what the study says. You would pick and choose which areas of the study that you'd want to construct.
And we're throwing money out into something that's going to be years and years without really knowing what we need.
No, because the study is going to be completed in 13, which will give a good overview of the city, what flooding problems we have. The council looks at that, then they deem what appropriate to fix, kind of like the streets efficiency study, and then in 14 is when you start to begin to fix those problems. You have to have money allocated to fix the problems, starting in 14. Construction instead of more plan development.
That's $50,000 for 14?
Get rid of $50,000 in 14 and $50,000 in 15, move it to $100,000 in 14. Construction.
But what's going to, that $100,000 is not going to be dropping a bucket for what's going to need to be done.
Yeah, 100, we'd have to budget future monies, but to get started, we would have to budget at least something moving forward, or else what's the point of even doing the study?
So you're just saying we need a five-year plan, so...
We need to start somewhere with the plan, the construction.
And this is changeable as we go along?
Correct.
Okay, any more comments? Oh, yes, Mr. Kramer.
I'm the one that wrote this. The citywide stormwater master plan was the original title I came up with two years ago. So I apologize that Baxton and Woodman entitled their proposal Drainage Study. They're one and the same. It was the intent, the thought was always there. It's a citywide stormwater drainage synonymous study. The intent of the 250,000 in 14 and 15, and again, you're not approving 14 and 15 tonight, obviously just 13, but the intent was, if there's other areas you wanted to focus in on, identified by that 2013 completion date, then we had money there. They would probably be retitled as their individual projects, that money taken out and put in the CIP in a different fashion, titled X Street Drainage Improvements Design. That was the intent of it. So again, I apologize for the confusion.
I just don't want money sitting there, and we're going to use it for anything without really having a discussion about it. I'm not sure I like that in there. But keep going, if you would, Mr. Wilson.
Just one additional comment, kind of piggyback on Mr. Kramer said, you know, after the study is completed by Baxton and Woodman, you know, they're going to bring that to the committee and discuss, and then kind of rank, and then when we come to this meeting next year, we're going to have a significantly better idea of what projects need to be done and how much they cost. And so the sheet, the sheets or sheets for those specific projects will be a lot better, a lot better vetted out after the study's done. This is kind of a placeholder, is more of an awareness thing.
Okay. Not a lot better, but completely figured out.
Correct.
Okay. For the money, we need to know exactly what we're doing, going to have to do. Okay, why don't you go on to the next item, then?
Sure. The next one for next year is the street resurfacing program. And in an effort to find some bidding synergies, Mr. Kramer has combined the street and sidewalk resurfacing program. This sheet has now become my favorite sheet in the whole book with all the numbers going on, so I really like this sheet. The facing page, the next page, is the street replacement listing, which was updated based upon the streets efficiency study that was done early in April and May of last year. It's just a continuation of the process that we've been doing the last four or five years, you know, following the study, doing the streets, doing the sidewalks. You'll notice in 14, there's not a resurfacing, a roadway project due to Royal Oaks. And the significant jump in 16 is due to the project on Mill Road. So that's kind of why it bounces around a little bit. And we did, on the next page, with the resurfacing, the listing, we did add the linear feet to each year, so you can kind of get a bearing of how much it costs relative to the linear feet. So if somebody says, hey, why did it jump up an extra half a million? You go, well, we're doing an extra three-quarters of a mile, or an extra mile of roadway, and that's why the pricing changed. Next project after that, which I believe the design contracts already have been led on, is the reconstruction of Stonem Street. Looks like from Pine to Hemlock. That's been in the CIP for a number of years, and it's finally going to get to it next
What page was the Stonem? 18. Thank you. Any questions so far? Okay, go ahead.
And the only other project in the Transportation section next year is the design for the Royal Oaks Project in 14 and 15, which I presume, after, you know, May, sometime in the summer or fall, I presume that contract will be coming to you from Mr. Kramer. 14 and 15, so we're trying to split it in as close to a half as we can. However, Mr. Kramer is working with Baxton and Woodman to figure out what a good actual breaking point in the project is, as close to 50/50 as we can get with the water main, the storm, the sanitary and everything. So it might not be exactly 50/50, once it gets vetted out through the engineering process, but it's going to be as close as we can get it, so.
But it's $400,000 just for the engineering?
As you'll see on the sheet there, part of that is a drainage survey, because there is the, it's called the Royal Oaks Lake or the pond there. They're going to have to do some, some study of that to make sure that the conveyance to that pond is going to be retained and/or improved. So they have to do some drainage or hydraulic studies out there for that. And then three hundred and fifty thousand to engineer the actual roadways and all the underground infrastructure.
And that's not part of the flooding or the other big project? Water?
I see Mr. Kramer standing outside. I don't want to give the wrong answer.
Mr. Kramer.
No, it's not. This is completely looking at, there was some talk when Royal Oaks was going to be reconstructed of eliminating the swales, making improvements to the drainage in and out both of Roy, of Lake Royal and Royal Oaks. We're going to have to come back to the council at some point with residents of Royal Oaks and come to some, some clear-cut conclusions on what is going to be completed out there. So that design number is kind of a guess right now, to be very honest. If we're not going to be doing storm sewer work out there, perhaps that drainage study will shrink in size and the design would shrink in size. If the construction incorporates storm sewer, incorporates sidewalks, I know the dreaded S-word, then that design number may be a little higher. We were looking at basically infrastructure improvements and the transportation, the road surface reconstruction.
Mr. Mayor.
Actually, John, I gave something to the two aldermen in that ward tonight. There's a, we're going to have a homeowners meeting. And it's just going to be the board of directors. I actually spoke with one of the board members. He gave me a list of questions both aldermen have, they're going to be asking. And he had said that doesn't look like they want sidewalks. I go, well, you're going to have to make sure. I did tell him, because I think we had this conversation, more concrete you put in there, if you're having problems with that pond or over there already, just going to raise the elevation. So these are things you need to consider. But I think they were pretty want the curves, but they're, both aldermen have a list of questions. I gave a copy to the manager, so they're ready for a meeting coming up in a month and you'll have a lot of those answers that you're looking for.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Wilson? Do you have a question?
Oh, okay. Okay. So that's the end of the transportation section for next year, and there's nothing real significant in the out years that we need to touch on. So unless there's objection, we'll move on to the Buildings and Grounds section, which begins on page twenty of the booklet, the summary. You'll see we have the replacement of the rotunda windows, some paving, tile paint, carpet, ceiling tiles, and the interior shop and storage paint. So one of the first ones is the replacement of the rotunda windows, and I'm going to turn this one over to Mr. Forrest, who's just given me an update on this project. So I'll let him elaborate and speak to that.
All right. Thank you, Brad. In examining these windows and making some phone calls, I was able to find the original manufacturer who produced these windows. Unfortunately, I think they're deteriorating a little faster than we would like them to. So one thing I was just asking Mr. Wilson be if we can move this into fiscal year 2012 instead of thirteen. As these windows start leaking more and more, I'm afraid we're going to start having damage to the interior walls that they're adjacent to in City Hall. So I have found the original manufacturer of these panels distributor. He's given me a list of contractors that are able to do this type of replacement work. This is not where you can just call Jim, the local glass repair guy, and have him come out and swap the window out. It is a specialized installation, so there are only certain contractors that can do that. I'm in the middle of getting prices from three contractors right now. But I think it would behoove us if we could move this into 2012 from 2013. And these are, just to clarify, these are the translucent panels on the east and west sides of the rotunda.
It's a hundred and ninety thousand you're estimating?
No, this is thirty-five thousand.
Oh, what's, what's, oh, Public Works is a one ninety?
Yeah, page twenty-one.
Thank you. Alderman Wesley.
So, John, if I ain't mistaken, you want to take the thirty-five thousand dollars and put in this year's budget that's going on now?
Correct.
Correct? So you're going to remove it out of 2013?
Correct.
Isn't there money available already in that account?
That's probably.
How much is it in there now for building maintenance? Could you answer that, or?
Yeah, unfortunately, since he just asked me that three minutes ago, I don't have an exact number. But what I can say is that there's certainly enough available cash in the Capital Projects Fund to cover this either next month or three months from now. Whether it's in the month of February or the month of May, it's not going to make a, really a bit of difference to the cash position of the Capital Projects Fund, so.
Well, I'm just wondering if we should leave this thirty-five thousand dollars still in 2013 in case we have some of these other windows that, that, I mean, to dump it totally out. I mean, if we got money in 2012's budget to do those windows now, then why not leave the thirty-five thousand there just in case we have some other window issues? Because I guarantee you're going to come back in 2013 and say, now we got some windows over in the PD locker rooms or City Hall here that we need thirty-five thousand dollars for. So I would strongly suggest we leave the thirty-five thousand dollars there for 2013 as a precaution instead of not coming back with any windows issues at all. I'm concerned a lot of our windows are pretty old here and the doors are getting old on a, through the whole city here, so. I'm in favor of replacing the windows in 2012. There, I know there's got to be money there, because I know we're looking at the list of bills, we haven't spent that much money in repairs in the building here. So I know there's money there. I would recommend that we leave the thirty-five thousand into 2013, just in case we have some other windows or door issues. I mean, that's my opinion. I just don't want to come back 2013 and you're coming back here and say, oh, I need thirty-five thousand dollars and took out Capital Projects already.
What are the chances, John, of having to replace more windows?
Oh, it's very realistic. Again, it's, as Alderman Wesley said, the windows in this building, windows and doors are twenty-two years old now. Thermapane windows do have a life to them before, at some point in time, the seals will start to break. Once that happens, that's when you start getting the humidity and the moisture in between the panes of glass, the windows start to become cloudy. So it's, I mean, it's not a matter of if it's going to happen, it's just a matter of when.
But you had nothing in there for that problem?
We had come forward, I believe it may have been two budget cycles ago, about replacing the entire curtain wall, I believe that was about three hundred and fifty thousand?
It's in the unfunded.
Okay. So we've been anticipating this for a while of, you know.
Did you replace them?
No.
They really don't look that bad. I don't know. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the three hundred and fifty thousand is in the back of the book in the unfunded. That was the night we got a great letter from the state that they were six months behind and we cut a million dollars out that one night. That was one of the projects that was in there. And it's been back there ever since. But if those walls, I mean, like you said, John, if you start getting the mold into the walls and whatnot, we don't want that to happen.
Correct, yes. If Mr. Wilson feels comfortable that the money is in the general fund and we can move forward with replacing these translucent panels this year, I strongly urge that we go forward with that.
Mr. Mayor.
And John, every year you do put money in, there's a line item for building maintenance every year anyways. We already put money in the budget every year for building maintenance.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Wilson, continue.
Okay, thank you. The next one for next year is paving. As you'll see, next year, plan on doing the City Hall and the Police Department parking lots and the PD driving areas, and then the various water facilities, the different stations or if anything, you know, deteriorates over the winter to catch those. And then the out years, again, are the smaller lots, the water facilities, the various booster stations, pump, wellhouses, things of that nature. But next year is significantly higher due to the fact that will be a resurfacing of the parking lot out front here and behind the building on the Police Department side.
Any comments? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The next one, this looks like the last year of this for Public Works Building at seven twenty, rehabilitating, replacing some of the carpet, the paint, the tiles. You can see in the picture there, even though the color's not the greatest, you can tell the wear and tear on the corners there. The tiles look like they're starting to separate a little bit, the carpets. And it's Public Works facility, so the carpet, you know, over time gets dirty and worn and things like that. So just replacing that, updating that fresh paint to just keep it up and, you know, maintain the building.
Okay.
Then the last one is the interior shop and storage paint in the maintenance area. This is again to paint that, kind of keep that fresh and keep the building in good working order.
In other words, you're saying they cannot be cleaned now? Paint's too deteriorated?
We'll have to defer to Mr. Kramer, as that's in his building.
Thanks, Brad. Currently, the walls aren't painted, they're cinder block. The lighting isn't the greatest in the vehicle maintenance shop, they're sodium, or excuse me, metal halides. It kind of gives a yellow glow when you're working on things. The anticipation of painting it, not only to seal out that retaining or that concrete block a little bit, but also brighten it up. If you paint it white, you're more likely to get that light transferred off the walls and back down on equipment. So just a little something to make things a little more aesthetic, but also function a little better. The existing wash bay, as it was deemed, has kind of turned into more of a parking area for the dioride vehicles. That area has never been painted. We'd like to use it as a wash bay. Unfortunately, we've never started because it, the block was never sealed. So before we start washing vehicles in there or using it as its intended use, we need to paint that inside surface.
Any questions? Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's nothing significant in any of the out years in Buildings and Grounds, so we'll move on to the miscellaneous section, which begins on page twenty-six of the booklet. Just looking at the summary, the decorative street lighting is the run out of the contract that was approved, was it a month, a month and a half ago, for the remainder of the decorative street lighting, both south and north on Wooddale Road. The removal and reforestation of the ash trees, just continuing the current program of removing the ash trees, trying to stay no worse than even with the thermal ash borer. The GIS maintenance, just the continuation of that program, entering more and more data into the GIS system. The asset management software for Public Works, I don't believe, have you brought that? I don't know that that's come forward yet, but that's continued training and implementation of that software. The IT strategic plan, we'll get to that in a minute. The sign printer, we'll get to that as well. The streetlight installations is a continuation of the program to install streetlights on city streets like we've done in the past. We've put a few streetlights in. And the metro parking lot improvements, which is currently being designed now. And then the strategic plan, which is the one that was approved at the council last week, are all in next year. So we'll get through some of these pretty quick, some I think might take a little bit longer.
You're saying that we're going to replace all the lights in the metro lot?
If you'll allow us, if we just get to that slide, we'll, we'll.
I'm sorry?
We'll get to that slide in a minute, if that's okay, and then we'll go through it.
Go ahead. Alderman Wesley.
I just have one question on the asset management software for thirty thousand. Is that a Springbok software now, or no? Or is that a total separate software?
Totally separate software.
Okay, so that software is for what, fresh memory here?
As with the metro lot, if you would give us, there'll be a couple of slides and then we'll talk about it. You know, the GIS in fourteen, it's like building addresses, subdivision layers. I know they're doing water services and valves currently in this year. So like I said, it's just a continuation of the program that we've been doing for the last number of years for GIS. The ash trees, again, we're currently down to around a hundred and ninety trees. When we started this program, three and a half, four years ago, I think we're around two fifty. So we're slowly getting through the ash trees, replacing them, making sure that the EAB isn't taking over too much. So the guys are doing a good job of staying ahead of that.
How many trees is that per year are we talking about? Approximately?
As far as removals of our existing ash trees? Is that, is that, is that the question? Last year, it was three hundred and twenty-five that we had in there between last year and portions of this year, the previous year and this year. We've eliminated a little over a hundred. So we're making progress. This year has been slower than the previous year due to some issues with the brush collection and things like that. It hasn't been as quick as we would like. But then again, the declining of the ash trees, we got the ones in very poor condition. Those are down and they're removed. The ones that were in declining condition were part of the original allotment that we identified. They're looking, they're not healthy, but they're not a dead tree sitting in the parkway. So they're not as urgent to get down, but we will get to them.
How many more years do you expect to have to have a budget for this?
It depends on our replanting. Once we get them all down, I would still like a few more years out of replanting, because, you know, each year we don't replace the same amount that we're taking down. We like to get close, but we're not to the point where we're equaling those numbers.
So this will be replacement as well as?
Yeah, correct it is now.
Okay. Alderman Winger.
So am I understanding correct that we can do about fifty trees, tear down and replant for fifteen thousand?
If we do the removals in-house, that keeps the cost down. If, obviously, if they're a tree over fifty feet, the parkway, they're embedded in power lines, they're close to a structure, those we subcontract out. If they're beyond the capabilities of staff or the equipment, those we contract out. The tree planting, relatively inexpensive, we can get a tree in the neighborhood installed for, you know, around a hundred dollars a tree with a two-inch galper. So the replanting's obviously the far cheaper cost. We've been trying to do the removals in-house to keep costs low.
Okay, thank you.
How much, John, as long as you're up there, how much does it cost outsourced to one of those big trees? What's an average cost for one of the large ones that are?
It kind of depends on time, but I would give an estimate of between four and seven hundred dollars depending on the tree.
How much? Thank you. Anything else? Please continue.
The next one is the asset management software that Alderman Wesley asked about. The software is, I hate to say exclusively used, but predominantly used by the Public Works Department for their work order systems, infrastructure management, tracking how old the infrastructure is, things of that nature. Right now, a lot of the departments are very paper intensive and it takes a lot of time to compile a lot of the data over there. So this program would help streamline that process, save some time, make data retention, getting trends and stuff like that out of the data, a lot simpler and more efficient. And as an aside, a lot of the infrastructure management part of it will address the, will help to address the concern from the audit note that the Finance Department had. So we're going to piggyback on with Mr. Kramer's software to take care of that as a function of this software as well.
So you need sixty in twelve and thirty thousand in each of thirteen and fourteen?
Hate to do this to John, but I'm have to defer to Mr. Kramer. I know part of it is the purchase and initial implementation, and then there's, I believe, some additional modules and training that go along with it. modules and training that go along with it.
Thank you. This will actually be brought to you in the next month and a half. We'll bring a proposal to you formally with our asset management plan, the presentation. The intent of the first year is the rollout and basically doing work orders. Currently at Public Works, all of our work orders are done via paper. When someone calls Public Works, when someone calls one of the city departments for a work order, a street light out, pothole needs to be patched, everything's done via paper. It's then either faxed over to Public Works, put it in our office mail, put in a mailbox, then it sits there, awaits for someone to complete the work, then it's collated by the supervisor or crew leader of that individual division. It's then crossed off and then kept in a file. Those are antiquated ways of doing things. There's no assurance that the work was done. There's no checks and balances on there. There's no way for, to account for any of that work. No way account for staff time other than by looking at a timesheet, no way to see the equipment that was utilized, no way to see the parts, pieces, dollars spent. All that, we, we would like to track. There's a cost associated with that, and this is the beginning stages of that. The asset management would allow us to begin to track our work orders, then ultimately track the work. We could take our street sufficiency study, plug that into the asset management program, take our water survey, plug that into there. So then when we have these questions and we're asked, when was the last time we did work on stone them? We can pull up, the last time we did work was 1993. The water main was installed in 1962. This is our track for replacement. Here's how long we, we anticipate that all to take before it needs to be replaced again.
I'll give you one more piece of paperwork, if I may.
Absolutely.
The Wooddale Sign by Dunkin' Donuts, one of the lights is out over there, I understand. Did you know about that?
I was informed earlier this evening. I will see that it's taken care of.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Please continue.
We'll go on to the IT strategic plan. A brief note, it's anticipated that as this gets completed, as we go forward, there are gonna be numbers appearing in those out years. But for this year, we really focus just on, on the current upcoming year to address the issues at hand with that. The largest, well, kind of a two-pronged issue. One of the biggest issues we have right now is that the data transfer from City Hall to Public Works and their ability to access the data that's on the city servers is painfully slow. It, it's, it's bad. I don't know how to describe it other than bad, especially in today's technology. I mean, it's, it's just terrible. So the, the strategic plan, and working with Simco, who's our provider for phones and internet, they would be bringing fiber into this building here to make this building faster. And then in the strategic plan, we have a point-to-point location which would provide Public Works with 50 megs per second as opposed to the 1.5 they have now. There is some question on that. Yeah, there is some question as to if that's the best option. We've been presented with the possibility of running fiber to the Public Works facilities as well. If we go the fiber route, it might not be as fast, but the cost will drop probably about $20,000 from that 120, so it'll go down to about 100. And the issue with the P2P, the company that we initially talked to to install it said that it would work fine with our phone system. However, the company that hosts our phone system isn't so sure. So unfortunately, at this point, we're kind of between the two options. We can say, though, that it's gonna be no worse than the 120. We're optimistic that it could possibly get down to 100. I believe IT manager Case said he should have an answer, possibly as early as next Tuesday, but it might be a little bit later than that, depending on how fast people get back to our representative at Simco.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. How often does Public Works need to access data to City Hall? And then secondly, what's like a rough idea of the annual cost of the T1 lines that we'd be saving in cost?
The first question, every day. Springbrook is hosted here at City Hall, and it sometimes can take them upwards to five minutes to log on. It takes us about three seconds. And the other one, currently, the cost of the T1s is, I believe, between $400 and $4,500. It could get down to, I think, around $2,500 with the fiber. So about $2,000 a month, so about $24,000 for the year.
Each year, we'd be saving about $25,000, just in the lines alone? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. And then going back to the other, the logging in, is it delay beyond logging in? So once you're in the system, does it take a long time as well, or is it just the logging in?
No, it's, it's everything.
Okay, thank you.
Saying the one at Public Works takes five minutes to come online?
It used to take five minutes. Mr. Kramer could probably give you a better time estimate. I know the last time I was over there, it was about five minutes.
Springbrook is slow, and there's not a lot of people that use it, myself, Ally, Violet, those are the people that basically use Springbrook. So that's not, you know, it's slow, it takes a long time to log on. The GIS server is located over here. So anytime we need to look up data via the GIS network of water mains, sanitary sewer, streetlights, all that is located in City Hall, and, and those connection speeds are ridiculously slow. It takes me 15 minutes to load a map, and then if I make a change to refresh it. All that, all the GIS software uses immense amount of data. I'm not a computer guy, I don't claim to be. I'm sure Nick will, could tell you the speeds in which they travel and the amount of data and how fast the refresh rate is and things like that, but it is, is very, very slow.
But you recommended Springbrook?
I personally did not. That decision was made before I got here. Not trying to pass, but, not trying to punt, but, but the, the speed, the, the speed, the transfer between City Hall and Public Works would be there regardless of what software we have. Like I said, Springbrook is slow. The, the ArcView that John was talking about is ridiculously slow. Even opening up just an Excel spreadsheet on the engineer's drive that's housed here, I think could take, what, three or four minutes as well, depending on how big it is. So it's, it's a global issue, not just one particular software.
Alderman Wesley.
I have a question. Before we commit to, obviously, the way it was explained to me, the, we get data for water mains and everything else there. Wouldn't it be cheaper to install a server over on that in the Public Works division and be able to use that for their GIS and not go through the citywide? We had this conversation before. Instead of going through the tie line, if Public Works needs it for GIS, which was explained to us now mainly and all that, wouldn't it be cheaper to add a small server over there there for all their data that they need is in that file? Could someone answer that? The IT man.
I'll pass it to IT manager Case. I will just say that I believe the engineers do use the GIS, and I believe Mr. Clicker does as well, so-
But you have it here, and why not put another one over to Public Works?
Oh, you, I'll let Nick talk. But you'd have a replication issue then, where you could have data that doesn't match, which isn't good for anybody. But I'll let the IT manager Case.
Please.
Thanks. It, you could put a server there. We're still going to incur the same costs, needing lines there. There's other data that they access at Public Works, like John said, Springbrook, all the mails here. Basically, everything is hosted here. Also, still need phone lines there, and all the phone lines are through the internet. So no matter what, you're going to incur the same costs. So we can essentially put a server in there, spend the money on that, and then also upgrade the lines, or we can just upgrade the lines and fix all the problems.
Mr. Mayor.
When you say fix the lines, are you talking about putting in the fiber optics?
Correct.
And I think I heard it was, we would save possibly $10,000 to $20,000 off this price?
Correct. It will save approximately anywhere between $1,000 to $3,000 a month.
And then naturally make everything faster and-
Correct. About, for Public Works, roughly 15 times faster. For us, about four to six times faster. And those speeds can vary depending on price.
Any more comments? Yes.
So if we're saving, I heard almost $25,000 a month, a year, take that back. So let's say $20,000 a year. In five years, this thing will be paid off for itself anyways, and we're gonna-